Evan, if you see the new board member before I do.
I see him.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, there he is.
We can have him on screen, we just can't. He's not voting. Madam Chair, the time has come.
I'm sorry, I'm talking on mute. What um. What is the new board member's name that'll be starting in August?
It's Matthew Gallagher.
I'm going to promote him up to panelist, just to let him introduce himself.
I think he's coming over already.
So, good evening, everyone. Tony Gonzalez calling together the planning board meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Quick roll call, we have Marty Crowell. Yeah, I'm you, Marty. Can you take it off mute and confirm your attendance, Marty? Okay, I'll come back to Marty. Yolanda.
Present.
Okay, Tony Gonzalez is present. And Marty.
I am present.
There you go, thank you. Okay. Just so all the applicants are aware, we have just three board members tonight, you'll need a vote, a yes from all board members to carry through. So when we call you up, please let us know if you want to proceed with hearing your plan tonight, or if you want to request a continuance when we have our fourth, actually, we'll have five board members. Quickly, we have Matthew Gallagher, who's present tonight to listen in. He will be our new board member, starting in August. All right, before we get started, can I, someone gonna say something? Okay, before we get started, did everyone have a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting? And is there a motion to approve, accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, roll call, Marty Crowell.
Yes.
Yolanda Spanola.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Okay. Thank you. So we have one A and R, Evan, 127 Liberty Street.
Correct. It's an industrial property off Liberty Street. In the rear of the property is, runs a brook with a bunch of wetlands. They're just splitting that portion of the property off from the lot and conveying it to the city, which owns the property on the opposite side. So it's an industrial zone, so they don't really have any frontage issues. So it's good to go.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, roll call, Marty.
Yes.
Yolanda.
Yes.
Tony, yes. Okay, moving right into the agenda. Tonight, we have a Plinum Mary subdivision for 1003 Crescent Street. They request a motion to continue. Is, actually, I need a motion for them to continue tonight. So is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to continue.
Okay.
And I second that.
All right, roll call, Marty.
Yes.
Yolanda.
Yes.
Tony, yes. So 1003 Crescent Street will be continued probably to the August meeting. Just for the record, there will be no meeting in July. City gives us a vacation month, I guess. It's a busy but, busy week around 4th of July. All right. Do we have applicant Brian Needle here for property 267 North Quincy Street, Representative J.K. Homegren Engineering?
I don't see.
So, so Scott was having, the phone number is Scott. He's on his phone right now. He was having problems joining on his laptop. So I don't know if we can move him over, but we might just allow him to talk.
Click the allow to talk button.
Will someone be pulling up the plans for him then?
I can do it if needed. Scott, can you hear us?
I certainly can, folks. Can you hear me?
Hi, Scott.
Yes.
Boy, I'm, I'm sorry, folks. I was, I thought for sure this was gonna work. I know it's a surprise. I'm sitting in the G A R room, waiting for the city council meeting at 6:30. So I figured I would be smart, I would come with my laptop, sitting here by myself. And I can't figure out how to get online at all. I've got no connection at all. So I apologize, as usual, for my technological deficiencies, but hopefully Evan can help me out here.
Sure. Yes.
What I have is a definitive subdivision at 267 North Quincy Street. And it's, it's kind of a, a unique situation on this end of North Quincy Street. The city line between Brockton and Abington, where it typically falls on a street line. In this case, it's about, about 10 feet into what you would consider the Abington property. So there's a little strip of land, again, about 10, about 20 feet wide, actually, that is City of Brockton property. So the large parcel of land, about 12 acres, majority of it is in Abington. The owner is looking to subdivide it, but because he has that little 20-foot strip that falls within Brockton, we have to come before you first, subdivide the piece in Brockton. And that will allow us access to the remainder of his backland. So what we're looking to do is to create two non-buildable lots. As you folks know, the, the process that we have to go to, through to create non-buildable lots is a definitive subdivision. So this will create what I'm calling on my plan, parcel C and D, both small lots, again, about 20 feet wide. And then that will allow us to go to the Abington Planning Board for a plan to divide the, the remainder of the property into lots A and B. So it's, it's just that situation there because there's that strip of land that happens to fall in Brockton, that we have this before you tonight.
All right, thank you. That's great enough. Any questions from board members?
Sounds pretty simple, Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, I agree. Is this open for public? Mr. May, is this open for public comment?
Yes, it is, Madam Chair. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was having some technical problems. There we go. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would like to comment on this subdivision, please use the raise your hand icon, which you can find at the bottom of your screen. If you hover over the very bottom of the screen, a menu bar shows up. You'll see an icon that has its hand up. Press that icon and we can open your microphone and let you speak. And Madam Chair, at this time, I do not see anyone wishing to speak.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to.
Go ahead, Marty.
Thanks, Yolanda. I make a motion to withstand the conditions. To approve with standard conditions.
Thank you. Second. Is there a second?
Yeah, I second that.
Oh, thank you, Yolanda. Okay, roll call, Marty.
Yes.
Yolanda.
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right. Next, Zero Field Street, which is a definitive subdivision, ask for continuance. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And I second that.
Okay, roll call, Marty.
Yes.
Yolanda.
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you. Next up, site plan review for 137 Perkins Avenue. Again, J.K. Homegren Engineering. Scott, still on the line?
Yeah, I am, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Scott Tharia, Homegren Engineering. And again, I appreciate the planning department's help here. I think if you go to sheet number two, Evan, if possible, what we have before you tonight, folks, is a site plan application for a, what used to be referred to as the Candy Factory at 137 Perkins Ave. It's a big, big, it's a four-story, but extremely tall, existing building that's been there forever. And I'm representing the Foley Management Group, who are hoping to turn this building into a self-storage facility. We've already received Z B A approval for that use. We've gone through the conservation process and have hammered out a, an agreement with the, with the Conservation Commission and the Beta Group, where the, the site design has all been reviewed and approved. And we have been through two technical review meetings, where we've hashed out most of the, most of the items. We, we had some, some small changes to make from Deputy Chief Williams and also some planning department changes that we made. So what we're left with, folks, is this big building where they're looking to, they will renovate it, and it ends up getting 812 storage units out of the building. And they range from anywhere from five foot by five foot, 10 by 15, and 10 by 30, all the way up to 10 by 30. So there's all different sizes. It ends up being four levels total. And on each end of the building, the Perkins Ave end, in the Forest Street end, there is a loading dock that you would be able to, to drive your, your vehicle up to. There is gonna be a automatic loading dock lift. So you'll be able to wheel a refrigerator onto the lift. There's a hydraulic lift, it'll lift up to the loading dock. And then from there, you can wheel it into the building and elevators within the building to get you up to your floor and up to your particular unit. The site, as it stands, there's a common driveway between 125 Perkins and our building at 137, that runs from Perkins out to Forest Street. That's going to remain. There's a parking lot existing on the Forest Street side of our property. We're gonna maintain that parking lot. We're gonna create six parking spaces within that parking area. And there'll also be a loading dock on that kind of back wing of the building. And we are actually removing a little bit of paving. So there's a, there's a little less impervious area, once we're done with the construction than there is currently. And also to get us in compliance with the stormwater management regulations, if we flip to sheet C4, there is a rooftop, an infiltration system to handle the roof runoff towards the Perkins end, the Perkins Ave wing of the building. There's a large infiltration system, so that will handle all the runoff from the roof. There is also a compensatory storage and detention basin in the, the eastern corner of the property. So those two items will handle all the runoff from the site. Currently, there is, there's essentially no drainage on the site at all. It all runs uncontrolled out to the street and eventually dumps to the Salisbury Plain. So we certainly feel like this, this design really, is really a benefit to the, to the site and the area in, in providing some needed treatment for the, for the surface runoff before it hits the Salisbury Plain River. The one other tricky thing about this site, and we went round and round with, with Beta on their review for, for a couple of months, the, the entire site, and really this entire block of the, of the city, falls in the flood zone. It's, the flood elevation is, is roughly four or five feet higher than the entire site, and in fact, higher than the entire streets and abutting houses. So at this point, any work that we do on the site, any fill that we put on the site, we have to do a, what's called a compensatory storage area, so we make sure that we're not dislacing any, any floodwaters. And because of that, it, we've gone, as I said, we've gone back and forth and come up with this loading dock design, where these two proposed loading docks are essentially on columns. And they'll be made of, made of steel, they'll be great, so the water will be able to, to drain through them and they don't impede the water or take up any flood storage, any flood storage space at all. So that was our, our biggest issue in dealing with, with Beta Engineer in the, in the review process. As I said, we're through that. Once we receive site plan approval, we'll, we know we have a stormwater management permit that we will have to apply for and go through that process with the Stormwater Authority, once finished with you folks.
All right, thank you, Scott. Could, could you, you tell us what hours of operations the owner has in mind?
It is, it's, I believe, and it was part of the, the Z B A approval. I believe it is seven in the morning till seven o'clock at night. As I'm talking to you, I'm trying to flip through my notes to find that Z B A approval. But it was one of the conditions, six nights, six days a week. And then at, on Sundays, the, the hours are a little bit more limited. And everything is, is a key code to get in, a FOB to get into the, into the building and then into your, your particular unit.
Okay, so it's zoning then, right, Mr. May, that restricts the hours?
Yes, zoning did restrict the hours. Scott is correct, it's from seven to seven. And that is a concern of the Ward Counselor, Susan Castro, who couldn't be here this evening. But we don't need to condition it beyond what the zoning board of appeals has done.
Okay, thank you.
And that is, all tenants also are limited to access from seven to seven. So it's not just office hours, it's, people can't show up in the middle of the night and get access to their storage locker.
Okay. And then, Scott, as far as the parking lot, do you have lights there? And Counselor Castro is asking if they'll be downward to not bother the neighbors?
Yes, there, there are, Madam Chair. There's downward, excuse me, downward-facing lights around the parking lot. There's building lights to provide lighting between the two buildings, between 125 and 137. But on the backside of the building, where it abuts the, the residential properties in Auburn Street, there are a couple of lights there, and that, they are downward-facing, downward-facing Dock Sky compliant lights, Madam Chair.
All right. And she's asking if they can be on a timer? Is that typical, or do we need the lights on, I would think, for security as well?
Yeah, I would think for security, we would want them on, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would agree with that. Then, Mr. May, who reinforces to have the drains cleaned out periodically, the stormwater drains?
The storm, the stormwater system is on private property. The, the street that runs between Forest and Plain is private property. And the property owners would be responsible for any maintenance that goes along with those stormwater systems.
Yeah, that's correct.
So is, is there anything to do to make sure that they have, you know, these scheduled to be cleaned out periodically?
Yeah, just to expand on that, Madam Chair, is part of the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission in the, the compliance with D E P stormwater management, we have to do routine, twice a year, excuse me, twice a year inspections of the system and, and submit those, those inspection reports.
All right.
So that's, that's part of the standing order of conditions. If it wasn't done, then they would be subject to a, a wetland violation, you know, as anybody else would.
Okay. And I see the stormwater issues were addressed, and Chike's, Chike's been involved, has gone through multiple visits with tech review.
Correct.
Any questions from other board members?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a few questions. I, I guess, one, is, is there any renderings of what the, what the building's gonna look like? What the lot will look like after construction? And another question would be, if there, if the footprint is gonna change, the footprint or like, yeah, with the building itself?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the footprint's not changing at all. I, I, I believe we submitted renderings. There was a rendering package. It's, you know, to, to be honest with you, it, it kind of looks like all those storage facilities do, they're just big buildings, glass front, which in, you know, I, I kind of, we call it a dummy glass. It's a glass exterior, but there's a wall behind it. So you can't see in and see out, but it's a, a glass, a glass type of front. We are adding some, some landscaping to the site. But besides modernizing the building, you know, redoing the parking area and striping it, it's, you know, it, it's really not gonna look any different at all, you know, than what's there now. Just obviously, you know, new facade and, and, but it's the exact same building footprint and essentially the same parking footprint, except for a little area that we're removing of paving.
So it'll just be like a renovation of the existing building?
Exactly.
Okay. And for vegetation, can you clarify, like, what type, what that, it will look like, new vegetation that will be added to the site?
Yeah, the, excuse me, on the Perkins Ave side, we have, that, that's, really, the Perkins Ave side is probably the most extensive landscaping that we can do, just because there's, there's some actual green space there. So between our building and Perkins Ave, we have 11, just gonna try to get my names right. We have 11 inkberry shone. We have a couple of red oaks, which Mr. May is usually fond of. We have a couple of river, we have three river birches shown, all in that cluster between Perkins and the very front of the building. Then alongside the side lot line that would kind of abut 143 Perkins, the, the house that's very closest to the, to the property, we have a series of, of, of evergreen trees. We have red cedar and white pines proposed there, just to give more of a buffer from the folks at 143 Perkins to the existing building, even though it's been there forever, where we're still trying to do that. So we've got those evergreen trees and also a red maple proposed. And then as you go further down the building, we're a little bit limited as to what we can do because we have that large infiltration system and, you know, we can't have, we can't have roof systems around the infiltration system because it'll, it'll plug up the system. But along the perimeter, we are proposing a couple of red maples there, that kind of abut numbers nine and 13, Auburn Street. So that, that's really the, the most extensive plantings that we're doing right there.
Great. And I, I guess another question is, for the clientele, is it, the general public gonna be utilizing the facility? Is there a specific audience that you imagine utilizing the storage facility?
No, it's, it's, you know, as we've, you know, we've talked about it before, with all the apartment complexes that, you know, that we see getting approved and hopefully getting built, especially downtown. Most of these units, the residential units that you folks are approving, don't have any closet space. There's no storage and there's no closets. So that's the majority of people moving into these storage facilities in Brockton and the surrounding area, people that are moving into these apartments and just don't have room for their winter clothes and Christmas decorations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Marty, do you have questions?
No, no, I do not.
All right, thank you. Mr. May, open the public.
You, you muted, Mr. May.
I had something nice to say about you, and I guess it, it got lost. Ladies and gentlemen, today, now is the time to ask your questions. Please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen, and we can unlock your microphone and you can address the board and the developer's representative. And Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone using the raise your hand icon.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, roll call, Yolanda.
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you so much for your patience. I feel like I say that every month to you folks, but thank you very much. And I can't wait to, I can't wait to get in person again. Have a good night, guys. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, next up, site plan review, 159 North Main Street, Representative Orwig Associates.
Moving Dan to a panelist. Dan, is there somebody else with you this evening? If you're here, part of the development team, please use the raise your hand icon, so I can move you into the panelist position. There's two Dan Orwigs here. I'm going to promote them both, hopefully. Hopefully, one is a winner. Dan, are you there?
I see him. You're, you're muted twice.
So Dan, you need to accept the promotion to panelist. And then unmute your microphone and turn on your camera. There's Stan.
Am I still not connected here? Oh, there I am. Hello.
Hello, Dan.
How are you guys doing? I'm sorry, I, I. My name is Dan Orwig from Orwig Associates. Can you hear me?
Dan, before you get started, are you still on a telephone or another secondary device?
Am I on what?
A telephone or a secondary device. Secondary, you're, you're in here two times, and we're picking up an echo because it's.
Here, I can take this one out.
Perfect.
Is that it?
Yep.
Sorry, I have two, two screens. I didn't realize I had two subs. My name is Dan Orwig. I've been working on this project for a couple of years now, at least. It's the project at 159 North Main Street is for 50 residential units, 102 parking spaces. We have gone through, I think, most of the boards. We had help from the fire department and the access through the parking area, as well as the dumpster location and, and removal of trash. We met with Chike and all the drainage. She has four outstanding items that I have since finished plans on. He hasn't finished reviewing those, because he just, I just have those doing now. But they're minor changes, and the changes that he has been making are not substantive as far as the overall plan. We, we reduced the drainage by 50% from, from what it does now, we're going onto the site. I think, I don't know if you have, Evan, do you have sheet nine there or, or not? But that, that's the landscape plan. We think this, this particular property is a key location because it's at the corner of Charles and North Main Street. And it's approximately an acre of land. And the building that's there is, is, is really dilapidated and needs to be changed. You know, sheet nine has the, the landscape plan and shows the, the character of the project. That's the existing conditions. Now, the, the building is approximately, the existing building covers the site 50% of the site. We propose an L-shaped building, not as close to the, the street as the present building. And this is sheet nine, and this shows the landscaping of some parking underneath the, the, the building. And parking on the, the street level grade uh, floor. And there's some limited outside parking. We eliminated the resident, the, the commercial space on the street level floor. Uh, in order to handle the, the trash removal in an acceptable way with a trash chute. Uh, we had to extend the building a little bit uh, to Eldridge Place. And uh, we now have an acceptable uh, trash removal program. Uh, the infiltration basin is, is underneath all of the parking that's in that. The, the crooks of the L-shaped on North Main Street, right there. Uh, we have, our, our plantings are on all property lines for, for screening. We, the architecture has done analysis of the lighting. We have a lighting plan uh, for the architecture. And I think that's about. About, sums up the, where we are with the project. We think it's a, a, a good asset to the city of Brockton. And we've now are working on this tax incentive program with the two other projects for this area. And we may be amending uh, the tax incentive program in, in this area of uh. Are there any questions?
Uh, thank you. I actually do not. I see that the uh, Chike, the engineer. You've addressed his concerns. Um, Marty or Yolando, any questions?
No, I don't.
Uh, no, I don't, I don't either.
All right, um, good job, Mister Orwig. Is there uh, anyone raising their hand in the public?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to comment on this site plan review, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you just hover over the um. Hover over the bottom of the screen, the menu will pop up, and you'll see a raise your hand icon. And Madam Chair, I have no one indicating that they would like to speak at this time.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, roll call, Yolando.
Accept.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony is, yes. All right, congratulations. Thank you, Mister Orwig.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with your team. Thank you.
Thanks. So um, again, as a quick reminder, no meeting in July. Um, we have our new board member. Um, hope you enjoyed your evening, Matthew. Welcome to the team.
Thank you very much. I wasn't able to speak earlier. I was in a transition from uh, regular attendee to a panelist phase. But I just wanted to say, nice to meet all of you, or you meet you. I know I've been talking to a few of you through email. Um, and I look forward to working with you.
Great.
Welcome, welcome, Matthew.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Also, sorry, uh, board, just make sure you guys sign your uh, tender sheets.
We'll do that right now. I didn't, I didn't get it yet. As soon as I get it, I will. Did you send it already?
Uh, yeah, it should have went out, but um.
It probably goes to one person and then moves on to the next person. It could be me. I'll, I'll sign it as soon.
Okay, all right, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.